It's not whiskey.
Too bad.
All right, so good evening, everyone. I'm John Schneider, the chairman of the zoning board, and we have with me as voting members tonight, Mr. Tampkin and Mr. Goldman, and participating, our associate member, Mr. Friedenberg. I need to say to everyone, if you didn't hear, we're being recorded, and we're also being broadcast on the Needham Cable News, so don't do anything that you don't want to have become public. If, for some reason, we have technical problems and can't continue the meeting, all matters are continued until next month, so that we won't have to re-advertise, but we've done well for two years now with the Zoom format. We've gotten through every meeting. So the first matter is to deal with the minutes of last, well, last month we didn't have a meeting. They're actually the minutes from June. Someone want to move to approve them?
Some moved.
Second?
Second vet.
All in favor?
Aye.
They're approved. All right, so the first matter tonight is 180 Laurel Drive. Peter and Suzanne Billon, owners, applied to the Board of Appeals for a special permit under sections six, sections 1.4.6, 6.1.3, any other applicable sections of the bylaw to allow the construction of an attached two-car garage and to alter and maintain a pre-existing legal non-conforming garage. Property is located at 180 Laurel Drive in the single residence B district. I note for the record and for the board that the 6.1.3 is the wrong section. It's 6.1.2 that allows for additional garages. In my view, the English description of what's going on is adequate to give notice, but I just want to make sure that the other board members agree with that.
I do, John. Thank you for pointing me through that.
Mr. Tampkin, you do?
I agree.
All right, so on this, we have Mr. Melching, the architect. And maybe your clients are on. I see their picture.
Yeah, all three of us are here.
All right, thank you. Why don't you describe what you want to do?
So we've been working with David Roche at the Building Department since we started this project back in December, and we have been, we are in the planning process, and we've not applied for a permit. We have not broken ground. We are looking to maintain an existing garage on the property that faces Warren Street. 180 Laurel Drive obviously faces Laurel Drive. As part of our addition to a 1928, very lovely existing home, we are adding a two-car garage on the level of the home, so the garage sits up at the level of the first floor. The existing garage, which faces Warren, sits 10 to 12 feet lower and faces Warren Street and is not attached in any way to the home. As we're all getting older, it's better to have these garages on the same level as the home. There's always the winter snow and ice that leading down the slippery driveway and around the corner is not advisable, as everyone, I'm sure, has experienced in their life, so that is our reason to add the two-car attached garage. And seeing that the existing garage is well-maintained, the roof is in good shape, there's no water damage, it's part of a retaining wall that holds up the yard, we would just like to keep it. The homeowners have no desire to take it away. So we're applying to have it remain as is, as part of our application.
All right, so I should, as those of you who are here, we did not get comments from the planning board. The building commissioner says that he has no problem. Public Works just wants you to comply with their drainage requirements when you apply for a building permit.
We will do that.
Fire department, police, health department have no comments. And we received letters, I think, from four or five of your neighbors, all in favor of the application. The one problem I have is that you're only allowed to have three garage spaces in this area, so what are we going to do about restricting the existing garage that can't be used for two cars?
I'm sure Peter and Suzanne can comment to this, but having been to the property and been in that garage, if you were to park two cars in it of any normal size, you would not be able to get out of either one. One car fits in there very well, and you can get out the driver's side, and I believe that is all they ever intend to put in there. They have some college-age children that will drive vehicles and don't want to clog up the driveway, so they're hoping to, if they ever come back home, like, you know, this happens now and again, they could stash one car over there. So I believe it is not their intention to ever use it as two cars because it's just physically not something they believe they can do.
Okay, we'll have to decide. This is a little unusual. I mean, I was surprised that the building commissioner didn't say something about it and suspected that that was going to be the answer, that it physically doesn't really work for two cars, even though it's a two-car garage. We'll have to ultimately see if the board is all right with that. We can, of course, write a condition that says no more than three stalls in use at any time.
It is something David Roche and I did discuss. Sorry to interrupt, but it is something that he brought to my attention, and he felt, looking at the geometry of it and the doors and the clearance, his feelings were in line with what I shared.
Right, so anyone on the board have a question?
I had the same observation. It looks like a two-car bay, a two, the garage, the existing one, so as long as it's conditioned, they're building a two-car garage, the new one, so as long as the existing garage is limited to one vehicle, I have no problem with it. It complies with the bylaw on the number of spaces.
And I concur that I kind of like the leaving the garage in place, and I appreciate the, what was said, why it was there, and it's certainly far away from the rest of the house. Can you tell us a little about the glare of the light from the new two-car garage? That's one of the elements of 6.1.2, that not be intrusive to the neighbor.
So we are showing on the front elevation some lights that would be either adjacent or above the new garage doors. Peter and Suzanne are both very open to the idea that those are fully shielded, so they would only direct light downward. We don't have any plans to buy, you know, full glass globes that shoot light in every direction. They are hoping to have some natural light inside the garage, so there are plans to have a couple of windows, but those windows are just there primarily to bring light in, so that every time they go into the garage during the day, they don't have to flip a light on.
Thank you. That's very helpful.
So we have, anyone from the public, Daphne, who wants to comment on this?
I do not see any hands raised.
All right, I mean, there was, as I said, there were letters from a whole group of the neighbors supporting this. If there's nothing else, then someone want to make a motion on this?
I'd make the motion. Be happy to. Did you want to read the letters into the record at all, or just the names? No?
In light of no controversy, I don't think, it'll be part of the record.
Got it. So I'd move that the board approve a special permit under 1.4.6 and 6.1.2 of the bylaw to allow the construction of an attached, a new attached two-car garage and alter, maintain a pre-existing non-conforming garage conditioned upon it being used for a single motor vehicle, and that you comply with the other requirements of the bylaw, not allowing any lights to encroach or impact the abutting properties.
And also that they'll comply with the Public Works requirements regarding drainage.
Accept that to my motion.
Second to that, Mr. Goldman?
Yes, second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Looks very nice. Go do it.
Congratulations. Good luck.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Nice presentation.
All right, so Mr. Junta is here, I see. Case number two is 150 Gould Street, something that's been before us many times. Gordon's Fine Wines of Needham, Inc., applicant, applied to the Board of Appeals for a special permit amendment under sections 1.4.2, 5.1.1.5, 5.1.2, 5.1.3, and the other applicable sections of the bylaw to transfer the special permit dated July 11, 2019, from Baker's Best Inc. to the applicant. Property is located at 150 Gould Street in the industrial one district. Mr. Junta?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. George Junta appearing on behalf of the applicant. And as indicated, this is a relatively simple request. It's just a transfer of a permit, but I'm going to give you a little bit of the long explanation as to how we get here and, and sort of what this is a part of. So, but so with respect to the actual application, the permit from 2019, that was to allow Baker's Best, which at the time was operating in approximately one-half of the building at 150 Gould Street, allowed them to expand into the other half, so that they took the entire building. As a part of the decision, the board basically issued all the relief necessary to operate the business in the entirety of the building, and so that it became really the fundamental permit for the Baker's Best operation. And so we're asking to transfer that over from Baker's to Gordon's, basically. Like I said, pretty simple, straightforward. Now.
Gordon doesn't do the same thing.
Well, so, so here's, so the business, the, the business, the Baker's business will remain essentially the same, but, but this is a little different than I think maybe some people had anticipated for this property. And I have to tell you, this is actually sort of phase one of a two-phase process with the board. So this is an application just to transfer over the Baker's permit. Gordon's will continue the Baker's operation in substantially and materially the same way as Baker's has been operating for the last, well, I don't know, umpteen years, basically since 2006, when they first moved in there. The board probably is aware that some time ago Gordon's received a liquor license with the expectation that they would be moving into one-half of the building at 150 Gould Street, namely the half that Baker's had expanded into in 2019. At the time that they, that the liquor license was issued, there was a sublease arrangement with Baker's, so that Gordon's was going to sublease from Baker's. As things have played out with the pandemic and other things and changes in the marketplace, rather than simply sublease the one-half, Gordon's is ultimately going to be acquiring not just the Baker's business, but also the property, and ultimately will operate as intended in one-half of the building. We expect to file and hopefully come before you at the next month's hearing with respect to the permits that we need in order to operate the Gordon's business on the one-half of the building. But because of the way the transactions have sort of been structured and the way they've kind of been timed out, we have to do this piece first to transfer over the Baker's permit, and then come back in after for the, basically to adjust the use of the building. Clear as mud?
No, I mean, I'm puzzled, because if Baker's is still a tenant, why shouldn't they continue to hold the special permit to operate a catering business?
Ah, okay. So Gordon's is acquiring Baker's. So that the Baker's business is being sold to Gordon's.
Okay.
So, so this is what I'm saying. So this is a, a-
So they're becoming the new owner of Baker's?
Exactly, right. So they will own Baker's, they will own the real estate, and they will obviously own their own business that's going to operate the liquor-related business on the other side, but-
I have no problem with this, but I may have problems running a retail liquor store there, if, if that's what they have in mind. And, you know, fair, fair warning, I mean, a retail liquor store generates a lot of traffic, and that's a very problematic location.
Now, their, their operation there, as originally proposed, was quite different. It wasn't a retail liquor store.
That's, that's correct, and that is still the case. Nothing has changed on that front. The only thing that's kind of changed is the path by which they wind up there in the space. But in terms of the, the business, as you'll find out when we do the, the hearing on that piece, it is not a traditional or regular liquor store. It is really a, a distribution kind of facility with a tasting, with a, with a sort of event planning, you know, sort of arm as a part of it. So it's basically not a ra, regular retail liquor store where people are going to be coming and going and going in to buy stuff.
When, when were you in here on that business plan, that business model? It was pending getting the licenser.
Yeah, Mr. Junta didn't do it. A different counsel did it.
And, and I believe that was for a different location, actually. That was for a spot on the other side of 128, over in the mixed-use 128 district. And that was, and so that was actually part of why things have kind of played out some of the way they have in terms of, you know, Gordon's got the message that they should secure the liquor permit first before they came before this board. So they did that, and as I said, I mean, as it, originally they were going to sublease, but as things played out, now they're actually acquiring the building and the Baker's business.
George, I have a question about parking. I agree with what John said. It's very congested there. And more so, there's been acquisitions and redevelopment, and, and a lot more volume is coming, but a part of the existing condition of the decision of 19 is that the applicant keeps a number of parking spaces in the adjacent properties, I think 29 and 140 Gould Street. It seems like there's a lot of redevelopment there. Are those leases still in place? Are they written?
They, they are, and they're actually going to be, they're in process of being assigned over to Gordon's. So we're, we're not asking to change any of the requirements of the permit. You know, we're only asking to transfer it over, and Gordon's is well-aware of that requirement and has made arrangements to secure the, the necessary off-site parking spaces to comply with the permit.
Yes, so in other words, just to confirm on the record that, that, that there was existing lease for 29 parking spaces at 140 Gould Street?
Yes.
And that there's a reference in the decision to six additional, I guess, ad-will spaces, I guess, in one of the adjoining buildings. Does that remain in place?
Yes, all, all of that remains in place. None of that is changing with this. This is, this is, like I said, just a transfer of the permit from Baker's to Gordon's.
George, you had said that, that Gordon's was going to occupy half the building. What, what are the short-term and the longer-term plans for the half that's now occupied, or that would be initially occupied by Baker's Best?
So I, we will wind up getting into that, I think, at our, at the, at the hearing on that, which hopefully will be next month, but basically, it's, you know, right now Baker's occupies the entire building. And, and I'm not sure, Peter, I'm not sure if you recall, so originally, going way back, when Baker's first went into the building, the, the, they went, they took essentially the left side, the left half. The right side was, was used and occupied by United Refrigeration, which was a, like, HVAC parts kind of company. And they had, they basically used it primarily for warehouse, but they also had a retail component, and they would have, you know, HVAC techs would go in there and they'd buy parts that they needed to do repair or install or whatever. United Refrigeration went out, and then Baker's expanded to take the entire building. That was that 2019 permit, and they've basically had the entire building since then. They will, for the short term, continue to occupy and use it, and then, provided Gordon's is approved, Gordon's would then basically take the half of the building that was previously United Refrigeration. And sort of as a side note, the Gordon's business is, in some ways, a bit similar, but even a step less than United Refrigeration's was.
George, can you elaborate?
We'll get into that at the hearing.
Right, right, but, but so that, to have a transfer, it seems to me important to know what the applicant's business is. What is, what is the applicant's business?
Well, so with respect to this transfer, it's the same exact, it's the catering business that Baker's Best has been operating there since 2006.
Okay, so you're saying that they're, they're not intending to have any liquor use, warehouse use at that site?
So that is the plan, but that is not before you right now, because we have to come back with that. We, we, because of the way the deals are structured and because of some of the terms in the deals, we can't, we have to bring this piece first, and then we'll come back. They can't, Gordon's can't occupy the building until we come back before you and ask for permission to do that.
So let me ask a couple of the, the chain here. So, so the, the permit granted to transfer, the, this special permit for catering is being transferred to Gordon's, and Gordon intends to operate a catering business?
Yes.
Under the name Baker's Best or some other name. And then they're going to come in on a separate application and seek to locate some type of alcohol-based business on half of the space, yet continuing to operate the catering business?
Exactly.
And so at that point, it'll be a determination of whether we find the alcoholic, the alcohol-based business is suitable for that location?
Yes.
And are we transferring the permit to a potential purchaser or a current tenant? I'm confused on the legality of who's going to own the special permit?
Right, so for the purpose of this proceeding, it is a prospective purchaser. There was a sublease, there was a sublease agreement reached, you know, back, back when, but with the, with the new deal essentially supersedes and replaces that. So for this proceeding, it is a prospective purchaser. My only sort of footnote to that would be, I would ask, you know, if the board grants the transfer, we have, we had to apply with a particular entity, you know, a particular named business entity, but going forward, Gordon's will likely create a separate entity to run the, you know, run the Baker's component, and we'd like to be able to transfer it, transfer it within the companies, as long as it's the same, you know, same basic owners, the same basic parties. Because I presume the board will still want to keep a restriction on transfer on this permit, given the, the parking issues and whatnot on that, on that site.
So again, if we vote to approve the transfer, who is the applicant? It's neither subtenant, it's not tenant, and then that's not owner yet.
It's prospective purchaser of the business.
Right, and, and anything we vote would have to be conditioned upon that closing actually occurring.
Right.
They're not going to get the permit unless they get the lease, right?
So they become the owner.
Right.
And when is the intended closing of this?
So it will be, I don't have the exact date, because I'm not doing the transactional work, but it will be after, certainly after we go, come before you again with the next round of permitting.
And if that fails to be successful, is it presumed that the purchaser is no longer an interested purchaser?
May, may I interject real quickly?
Sure.
How you doing? Thanks for, for having me. So Gordon's intent is to purchase Baker's Best regardless of you, this board, approving the liquor license, plain and simple. So Gordon's and Baker's have been long friends, and we've helped each other through the pandemic. Now is the right time for us as a company to, to merge with, with Baker's. Our intent, obviously, is to operate a fulfillment liquor business with the catering business, but for the intents, for the purposes of this hearing, Gordon's is buying Baker's Best and, and the building, which is under agreement as we speak, and we look to close on Baker's and the building in the middle to end of September.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon.
Thank you.
Can you give us a sense of who the owners of the entity are?
It's myself and my brother Kenny Gordon.
Okay, that's simple. I mean, I have no problem with this transfer. Does anyone else on the board have a question?
Well, I think we've covered it well.
All right, just to go through what comments we have. Again, the planning board made no comment. The building commissioner had no problem with this, nor, nor did any of the other town authorities. So is there anyone from the public who wants to be heard, Daphne? You're muted.
We have one hand raised. So Ron, he will be, he, he's being promoted as a panelist as we speak. Ron, unmute and, and also open up your camera.
Am I now unmuted?
We can hear you now.
All right, that's half the battle. I'm not sure how to turn my-
I'm having trouble hearing you.
I'm not sure where the speaker is, so I'm not sure where I'm supposed to be talking. And I got to be honest, I'm not tech-savvy enough to know where the camera is for my computer. So I do apologize for that. Can you-
Could we have your name and your address, please?
My name is Ron Stoloff. My address is 143 Gould Street. I am directly across the street from Baker's Best. So my, I have minimal amount of comments or questions, but I do want to know, Gordon, going forward, are they going to operate the building or the business at 1, at 150 or whatever number it is, the same way that Baker's currently does in terms of the amount of trucks going in and out? Or is there going to be additional truck traffic from the liquor business?
I have no problem answering that if the board, if that's okay.
Go ahead, run it, please.
Yeah, sure. So the plan, and this is something we were going to get into in the next hearing. Currently, and as our whole worlds have changed, Baker's has no work-from-home policy, and a good portion of the staff has to go into that office every day, sales, back office. Gordon's, as a company, allows the staff to actually work from home, up to three days a week. That's a policy that we're going to put in. We want to address with, with this group here. In terms of liquor trucks coming in, those trucks, as we went back to the, the select board hearing, are scheduled between 10:00 and, and 2:00 p.m. on a daily basis, not to disrupt the morning and afternoon traffic. That's something that is fairly easy for us to do. Other than that, there is not more traffic being caused by either Gordon's or Baker's that currently doesn't exist at the moment.
The catering aspect of the business obviously can't be done remote. I mean, you need the kitchens, you need the production.
We, we employ, they employ a lot of back office people, accounting, marketing, sales. Those folks will be allowed to work from home, and we'll get into estimates at the next meeting. But, you know, we think at least 20 people will not be in that office in that building on any given day once the acquisition closes.
And, and the catering operation, which is currently occupies the entire building, you're going to downsize to half the building?
So, so it actually does not. And Baker's acquired the other half of the building with the intent to expand the kitchen operation into it. They never, they never got to that point. It's, it's still a warehouse space at, at the moment. Nothing has changed in that space since United Refrigeration has left.
Okay, then that answers my questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Daphne, anyone else from the public who's looking to be heard?
We do not have any more hands raised.
All right, I guess it's time for a motion. As I said, I have no problem with this transfer. I think looking at the liquor operation and the parking issues is a little more problematic, but that's not today's business. And they're just acquiring Baker's Best, and certainly have no problems with Gordon Liquors being the people who run the catering operation.
Agreed with that.
Agreed with that. Someone want to move to- Agree with that. Someone wanna move to approve the transfer?
Sure, sure. Uh, move the applicant's, uh, request for a, um. Special permit amendment under section one four, two, five, one, one, five, five, one, two, and five, one, three. Uh, of the bylaw to transfer the special permit. Uh, dated July eleventh, two thousand nineteen from Baker's Best Inc. To the applicant, uh, for the property located one fifty. Uh, Gould Street in Needham with some provisos that, uh. No liquor use or warehouse be made of the facility until further approval by this board. And, uh, that the, the event that the proposed sale, uh, of the, the, I guess, the assets. Or the stock of, of Baker's Best, if that sale does not go through. Uh, that this transfer, uh, uh, that this transfer be conditioned upon the closing of that transaction.
Uh, I'll second the motion.
Actually, and so in that, all the provisos of the two thousand nineteen. Uh, decision, and there are several, uh, that though the, those remain in full force of effect.
Uh, I would just clarify that, uh, that this special permit, uh, that was issued. Because I think, uh, the two thousand nineteen was just an amendment hour. So it's a two thousand six special permit that's been amended for three or four times. So the, the condition, if you accept this would be that all terms and conditions of the, uh, special permit. As, uh, previously amended shall remain in full force of effect.
Sure, that, that's the intent.
On that, I'll, I'll second the motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
We'll see you next month.
All right, that brings us to case number three, fifty-four Pheasant Landing. Jonathan Trahan, owner, applied to the Board of Appeals for a special permit under sections. Six point one point three and any other applicable sections of the bylaw to allow the construction of a detached single car garage. The property is located at fifty-four Pheasant Landing Road in Single Residence A District. Um. Again, the proper section and actually the one that's noticed in the application is six point one point two. It was, uh, an error in the public notice that went out. Um, again, the notice does say it involves the construction of a new detached single car garage. And, um. If, if the board concurs. As with the prior matter, I, I think the notice is adequate to tell the public what was happening.
I agree.
All right, so on the hearing, Mr. Trahan.
Good evening, Bruce Ringwall, uh, from Goldsmith Preston Ringwall, representing Jonathan Trahan.
Sure, go ahead and explain what you wanna do.
Good evening. Uh, the owner of the property is present as well, Jonathan Han. Um, this property is a lot that was created back in nineteen oh nine. Uh, the house, uh, constructed shortly thereafter based on assessor's records. Um, in nineteen, uh, eighty-six, the property was further subdivided, creating, uh, Pheasant Landing Road. The current lot is a three and a quarter acre lot in round numbers. Um, it is within the, uh, single family A residence zone. Um, of the town of Needham. The house itself has an existing, uh, three-car garage. However, it's a fairly small three-car garage. There's six hundred and eight square feet to the total garage. Which makes it not space. Uh, available to adequately store three cars. It currently works well with two cars and then provide space. For lawn, um, equipment and kids' bikes, et cetera. The property itself has a circular driveway. Um, would I be allowed to share my screen or does, uh, Daphne put up screens?
No, you can do it.
All right, with your permission, I'd like to share my screen, please.
Go ahead, please.
Okay. I'm not sure how it works on this, cause webinars are a little bit different. Um, but I'm gonna start with this. This is, uh, an existing conditions plan, uh, prepared by our office. Um, some time ago, I've worked with Jonathan and their family. Uh, for several different things, as well as the previous owners of this property. Um, the property has a, a large area of wetlands in the rear, uh, the eastern side of the property. This is the driveway coming in off of Pheasant Landing Road to the circular drive, uh, the garage. And this extension up here is a, uh, a parking space, uh, off of the, uh, the driveway itself. Moving to this next sheet, is this, did that change? Are you able to see that on, on your screens? Okay, just wanna make sure, sometimes I have to stop sharing and share again when I change sheets.
Nope, we can, we can see it. Actually, you can see this one better than the last plan.
All right, this is a plan prepared by the architect, uh, using our existing conditions. Um, in this space of the turnaround, uh, they're proposing to put in a, uh, a single car garage. Uh, of similar style architecture, which I'll get to in just a moment. Um, as a single, uh, freestanding, independent detached structure. It's allowed to be, uh, five feet as accessory structure to the property line. We have it proposed at roughly eight and a half feet with the, uh, roof overhang, um, being a little over five feet. Um, and as you're aware, you're allowed to have a roof overhang into the setback, but we tried to make the whole thing meet within that. Um, by doing this, we're not providing any new, um, impervious area on the site. Um, and I will follow through with another screen to address drainage off of that in just a moment. Uh, this is the proposed, uh, structure. Whoops, went the wrong way, my apologies. This is the proposed structure. This is how the structure would look from the driveway, from the rear of the property. From the road, if you could see it from the road and from the Butters property. Um, this is a cross-section. The reason for the construction of this is there is a, uh, family heirloom of a, uh, uh, an antique pickup. That, uh, they wish to be able to store on the property. Uh, they're no longer able to store it in its current location. Um, and so they've, uh, were at this point of asking for a special permit from your board. To allow for this. As you can see, um, this building is underneath the fifteen-foot height restriction. Um, I've reviewed this with the building department. Uh, they've reviewed these plans and I believe that they have submitted. A, uh, letter of that they are fine with this as proposed. I have, that changed? Does this change to another plan?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. This is our proposed building permit plan stamped by one of our, uh, land surveyors here at G P R. Um, showing again the same setbacks to the property line, meaning the property line setbacks. And I'd like to bring up. One more piece that I mistakenly left off of the application. Um, but these are two pictures. This is a picture taken from. Pheasant Lane Road, looking up the driveway, this car in the back, and let's see if I can blow this up a little bit. This car in the back is parked in this turnaround area that is, um, or the parking area. Where the proposed addition would be, uh, detached, but not addition, proposed detached garage would be located. As you can see from this location, you cannot see the other car, uh, garage spaces. And this picture is taken further up Pheasant Lane. Um, road where you can see. A portion of the existing garage as it sits back from the house. And you'll be able to see screened the outline, but this, that car that you saw a minute ago. Is still parked in that parking space, which is over here. And you can't see it because of the vegetation screening, um, that exists on the site. And the last picture that I'd like to show is, um, we're on the agenda with the Conservation Commission tomorrow evening. Um, as I said earlier, we've been before the Conservation Commission for several other things on the site and they're well aware of the site. Given that we're proposing no new impervious area. Uh, the Conservation Commission initially hoped that they could do this under administrative review, but then when I. Spoke with them about it and reminded them that I actually have to dig up the asphalt and put in frost walls. Um, they said, oh, you're right, we are doing work, so we do need you to come before us as an R D A versus a notice of intent. Request for determination applicability. Um, I believe the commission, um, has stated, or their staff has stated that they're meeting tomorrow night and that they see no problem with it. Uh, the town engineer's comment was that, uh, my site plans that I submitted to the Z B A did not. Show any erosion protection. That was because I just had an existing conditions plan and I didn't wanna modify the architects' plans. I have hence since given this plan to Daphne. This is the plan that was submitted to the Conservation Commission. It shows our proposed erosion control, um, on the down gradient side. It also shows this area around the building on three sides, which is a drip, stone drip edge. So that the runoff from the roof will recharge into a drip edge. And allow for recharge prior to, um, overland flow towards the wetlands. Uh, this is an improvement to the site where the curving pavement just overland flows towards it. And as you're probably aware, under the Massachusetts stormwater guidelines. Roof water is considered clean water whereby runoff from pavement is not and needs to be treated. So we're bettering the situation on the runoff and, uh, the use of the site towards the wetlands. Um, and we think that because of the setback of the existing garage and the screening that exists naturally on the site. Uh, where you'd only be able to see one garage door as you drive up and pass the driveway and then look in, you can see. Kind of two of the doors through the screening. Um, we're meeting the intent in the bylaw. Um, and not having an impact on the neighborhood with, uh, the impact of. The neighborhood seeing four garage doors and four garage spaces. And we are not trying to put four cars on the property. We're just trying to have a space for this heirloom to, uh, restore it on the site. And, uh, that is our presentation and I turn it over to the board for any questions.
Okay, thank you. Um, well, as you may have heard, the planning board did not give us any comments. And as you recited, the building commissioner has indicated he has no problem with this. Um, also, as you mentioned, our approval would be subject to receiving. Approval from the Conservation Commission and also that you comply with, uh, whatever. Um, drainage requirements the engineering department has when you apply for a building permit. But does anyone on the board have a question, Mr. Ringwall?
I think it's a, a good presentation, it's very thorough. Thank you.
Um, is, what does the, and I haven't taken a sight view, what does the current, uh, three-car garage look like? Is there three doors?
Uh, there is, um, if I'll share again, I can bring that photo back up. Um, there are three doors. This is the, the, let me blow this up a little bit and you can kind of almost see them. There's a door here on the left. One in the center and one on the right. Uh, the one on the right is, um, screened behind these trees right now. But, uh, there is a, a side entry or basically, uh, the main entry to the house. Right off to the right here as well. And again, this sits back, if you look over. My shoulder in the Hollywood Square, there's an aerial picture here and the front of the house is, is here. And the, this, these doors just recessed back substantially along the side of the house.
If, if, if you look at the plan, you can see the garage is actually behind the house.
That's correct. Here, I'll, uh, bring that screen back up. Oh, here it shows right there. So here's the road.
You didn't, you didn't come up.
Oh, I didn't come up. Okay, let me stop and reshare here. Uh, this one. How's that?
There you go. And, and, I mean, I also note that this is. What, a hundred feet off the road?
Uh, yes.
You can hardly see it.
Yeah.
But show, show us where the garage is.
So, uh, this is the driveway coming in, the front of the house, which is the closest point to the road. And then the garage sits back here. Again, the house and the garage are angled at such a manner that. As you drive by, it's hard to see that first garage door pinned in against the house. And then, uh, this would be detached off to the side.
So, so I don't have a problem with the concept of the new detached garage. I have a concern on the three doors. Uh, it looks like you are approving a four bay, uh, uh. Approval, so you can park four cars there. I understand your testimony that it's difficult, if not impossible. And the three bays look can accommodate two and toys. But I have a concern with the three doors.
Yeah, but remember, this is single Residence A, they're allowed to have four with a special permit.
Are they?
Yes, sir. They're, they're allowed three of right and then a fourth by special permit.
So revoke my comment.
Any other questions from the board? Uh, Daphne, then why don't you see if there's anyone from the public who wants to be heard?
Uh, could you please, uh, not, thank, thank you? All right, there are no comments, there are no hands raised. From the attendees.
All right, unless there's further questions, I entertain a motion here to approve it. Mr. Tampkin, you wanna go?
Sure, um, I have no concerns, uh, you've explained the zoning of, uh, this district and you're gonna have four spaces and. It looks like an attractive proposal and attractive, uh. Uh, plan for it, uh. Com- commendation to the architect and the engineer in designing this. So, given that I, I'd move to approve, um, a, uh. And just note for the record that it's under six point one point two. Uh, of, of the bylaw to allow the construction of a, a detached single car garage. As shown in the plans, this would be the fourth, uh, garage space on the property. Permitted under the zoning district, uh, with the normal conditions that, um. Uh, you're going to not allow, uh, light to come off the property, although I think this, this location is. It's not a, an issue. It's gonna be subject to Conservation Commission approval. Uh, and you're going for that hearing tomorrow night and it's gonna be subject to compliance with the, uh. Department of Public Works drainage, uh, requirements, and that would be the motion.
Second that, Mr. Goldman?
I second that, thank you.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations. Good luck tomorrow night.
Thank you very much for your time, folks.
I know, I've been there many times, thank you.
Very, very thanks.
Thank you.
All right, so gentlemen, first of all, who, we got three decisions, uh, they're up for grabs, uh, give one to each of us.
Uh, I, I think you should assign.
You should assign, all right, well. What, Mr. Tampkin, why don't you do? Gould Street, I'll do the Baker's Best and Mr. Goldman can do Pheasant Lane.
The most recent one?
Yes.
Excellent, so number three is Goldman, okay, yeah.
So you want me to do one eighty Laurel?
Yes.
Right.
Got it.
All right, so the, the one question before we leave that Daphne posed at the beginning of the hearing. Is we're now allowed to meet by Zoom through next March. Uh, and do we have any desire to start meeting in person?
No.
I think it works marvelously. Wherever we are, we can join, participate, keep the town's business going. Uh, I'd absolutely like to get together for dinner with anybody, but I think for these hearings, the remote works wonderfully. And obviously, if we have a really contentious, significant hearing that requires it, we can always modify. But I, I personally think remote until March is the way to go.
Daphne, have you heard any? Comments from public or other sources that are unhappy with our process on Zoom?
No, I have, nobody has, no, there have been no negative response from the public about you meeting on Zoom.
I mean, I think it's a lot easier for the public too to participate because they sit at home in their. Office or kitchen. And participate on Zoom and don't have to, uh, come out. So I, 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 I think it's actually increased. The public participation in our hearing. I, I have to also say, I, I. I'm a little squeamish about trying to conduct a hybrid hearing.
And the hybrids don't work. If, if you're, if you're not there, you're lost. And, and obviously, I, I did it once and Daphne locked me out and there was no muzak and it was lonely. Uh, so I, I think we're there or not there and I think it's working. So I I think we're there or not there, and I think it's working fantastically. We're also cable casting these. And I think it allows participation across the board easily.
Other board members agree?
I agree. This has worked out well and there seems like people are engaging and the people are able to share their screens. So I think it's a positive. I concur.
We can always have a retreat at a local restaurant.
Yeah.
I agree.
Yeah, all right.
I agree.
Well, that, so that's your answer. Do you need to reserve, reserve rooms in case we meet? Does that?
I will go. I, that's what I have been doing, but since, but since we are agreed that we will be meeting on Zoom, then I think legally it's fine. You know, this overrides local, so I think you know, I yeah, I think we'll just keep it. I will just go ahead and make sure all the days say Zoom. That you're meeting on Zoom until March 20, until we hear anything differently.
I guess the question is, would there be competition if we need to reserve a room two, three weeks in advance?
Yeah.
I can go right now. So you're thinking that you may want to meet in person between March?
If we were to get, if we were to get a controversial hearing,
Right.
then I think we would want to meet in person, you know, something that we thought there was going to be big participation. I think we would want to meet in person.
Okay, so then what I.
So maybe it might be the best practice to reserve the rooms and then release it when we have our agenda.
I will do that. I think that that would work out fine. I agree.
Okay, anything else this evening, gentlemen?
No.
Nice to see all of you.
Enjoy the rest of the summer.
Absolutely.
Not much summer left.
So see, the next meeting is September 15th? No, 22nd.
15th. The the next meeting is September 15th.
That will be my last day of work.
Really?
You're retiring?
I'm retiring, yeah.
Whoa, wow.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I assure you, you'll enjoy it.
Peter, I'm surprised.
I don't know how I went to work with all I have to do now.
It really got in the way, didn't it?
It really did, yeah.
Peter, wow, that that's great news. Is this a mandatory retirement?
Nope, nope, I'm completely voluntary and and I'm actually the second lawyer in 20 years to leave my firm under their own power. So it's very, very rare in our little piece of the world.
Wow.
I've had it. So it'll be the new me.
Wow.
That's wonderful.
Yeah, thank you.
Congratulations. All right, thank you. I think.
All right. Take care, folks.
Good night. Enjoy the rest of the summer.
Congratulations, Peter. You'll have lots to, your golf game to work on.
Could use the time. Take care.